We'll call to order this regular meeting of the Superior Planning Commission, November 1st, 2011. Phyllis, we call the roll, please.
Chairperson John Craig-Craft.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Craig Prestasater.
Here.
Commissioners Joanne Eaton.
Here.
Ian Elverston.
Here.
Mike Bolson.
Lois Arden here.
Bob McCall.
Here.
Michelle Ripmester.
Tom Ricker.
Assistant Town Manager Beth Moiski.
Yes.
Attorney Christine Strzesteski.
Here.
Karen Fox.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Item three on the agenda tonight, public comment on consent agenda and non-agenda items. Do you have anything you'd like to address the commission on consent agenda or non-agenda items? This would be your opportunity to come forward.
Can I address the agenda on the green building codes?
That's an agenda item, so when we get to that, we'll...
It's on the consent agenda.
Oh, it's on the consent agenda, oh.
Yes, now's the time.
Yeah, so now is the time, sorry.
Can you come up and state my name and everything else like I normally do?
Yep, please state your name.
Just want to tell the whole truth and almost the whole truth. Hi, Brent Mickle, 862 Eldorado Drive. So when I first looked at this agenda, I was just curious, so I did a little research, and I had actually contacted the building commissions in Louisville, Lafayette, and Brumfield. And I guess Lafayette is considering adopting these codes as we are. Louisville, or Louisville is, Lafayette, I don't think has any intention of adopting the codes. And Brumfield, fortunately, I spoke to a very nice gentleman there who said they did not plan on adopting the codes at this time. He had sent me, and I have copies of this if anyone would be interested in it, an email from a gentleman in Tennessee who had struggled trying to comply with these codes and the difficulties that he found with the codes. And I'd like to address some of that, so is that a possibility?
Yeah, I think it's fine to accept that.
Okay. You guys are welcome to call me.
Thank you.
But some of the concerns I have...
Can we have a copy, Mr. McCall?
Of course.
Everyone but the attorney.
You want a copy, please? Right. Made extra copies. All right, so when I looked over this, I guess my concern was, I saw a number of drawbacks to adopting these plans, but I really didn't know what the benefits were. So I figured I would come to the meeting and hopefully find out what the pros were. But the cons that I saw them were, were the increase in cost mainly. I mean, one of the main issues with these codes is it requires continuing monitoring and inspections to find out how much, if I understand it correctly, how much electrical and gas usage the building owner uses to find out if they're in compliance with whatever ever increasing and tightening standards. So there's a number of reports and other things that the people need to get, and obviously city staff would need to go over those reports and review them, and then monitor the different building owners for compliance. Obviously, the building owners, there would be costs there. And from what I also understand is, these codes can be, it says in this email under number seven, it calls for the owners of existing buildings to file energy surveys with Building Official Phase One, create remediation plans Phase Two, and begin making building renovations to make their buildings more green Phase Three. So maybe I'm incorrect here, but from what I understand, traditionally, when you issue a certificate of occupancy, that certificate of occupancy is basically valid until you make improvements or enhancements to your property. And from what I gather from these codes, they can be interpreted as to where, if the building owner were not to continue to make the energy improvements to their property, theoretically, you could revoke a certificate of occupancy from a building owner and not make them eligible to occupy their building. Maybe that's incorrect, I certainly don't know, that's probably a legal opinion, but obviously, if that would be the case, it seems unrealistic to try to do that once you've issued the certificate of occupancy, and then be able to hold it like a theoretical sort of Damocles over the building overhead for fear that it may be taken away. And the final cost, and I'm glad we have the city attorney here, would be potential, obviously, legal cost to fight potential legal lawsuits that might come out as a result of the code. Obviously, you have a situation here where the town would be placing itself under these codes in between a private relationship between a building owner and his property and the utility company. And basically telling, you know, the building owner how much of the electricity and gas that they are able to purchase from the utility in order to be in compliance with the regulations. And another problem talks about retroactive enforcement of the building code. This gentleman's from Tennessee, I don't know what the law in Colorado says, but it states in here, he claims that retroactive enforcement of building codes is illegal in Tennessee. So obviously, you want to make sure that the codes here, if you're going to go back and retroactively enforce green building standards against existing building owners, that the city wasn't breaking the law. So the final thing, I guess I also happened to read an article today by the Daily Camera, which stated that the town plans on spending $100,000 next year for economic development and retention. And I had served with Sandy Pennington and Chris Hansen and Bob McCall on the Economic Development and Retention Committee, where we were looking at ways to increase development and bring businesses into town. And it seems like the town has really taken charge with that, and is going to take an aggressive standpoint in bringing new people into town. Obviously, there's the Ethan Allen space, which we're trying to convince Ethan Allen or what they're going to do with that space, if they're going to develop it. There's the Resolute property, which is on Flatirons and Colton, and they're talking about building hotels and office buildings. And then there's the new potential Explore property, which could take over the town center. So I think things are going, seem to be going very well with development, and it doesn't seem like it may be the best time, especially to take the lead on something which could suppress it. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay. If that was public comments on consent agenda items, we can either entertain a motion for approval of the consent agenda, or if you'd like to pull something from the consent agenda and discuss, we can do that as well. If you'd like to discuss the adoption of the resolution recommending approval of this, we can pull that from the consent agenda and further discuss.
I know it wasn't here at the last meeting, so I'm not sure.
Well, it was a work session.
It was just a work session.
Yeah.
Well, I'll make a motion to pull it, so we can discuss a little more.
Okay. All right. So I have a motion, that's a straight motion, right? Yes?
Yes.
Okay, so we have a motion to pull adoption of the resolution from the consent agenda, second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Eaton, second. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion? Okay, looks like unanimous. Okay, so we still have a consent agenda issue.
Correct, A and B.
Yeah, the chair would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda. Unless you want to discuss the minutes.
No. I'll approve the motion.
Okay, Commissioner Arden.
For A and for B.
Okay, for A and for B. Second by Commissioner Prestasater. Discussion, none, all in favor? Okay. Unanimous also. So that would move this to item, do you want to move it to item five?
It could be appropriate to take item four C.
Four C on its own now, okay. All right, so we will discuss item four C, adoption of resolution recommending approval of the addition of Chapter Six of the International Green Construction Code, the municipal code, and recommending approval to have an amendment to the residential green building code. Do staff have any further presentation, or do you wish to address any of the information that's been presented by citizen? At all?
I can make one comment.
Okay.
Granted, we just got this.
Yeah, of course.
We just got this, but it appears that this is talking about the entire chapter.
Right, I understand that.
IGCC, and we are only talking about Chapter Six tonight. Just wanted to make sure we're clear on that.
Yeah, and so maybe for the benefit, sorry, your name again was?
Brent Mickle.
Brent Mickle, okay. For Mr. Mickle's benefit, I don't know if you were able to watch any of the previous discussions we'd had, we'd had two meetings where we discussed the green building code. And this particular part that we're talking about is a part of that, not the entire green building code. And, I mean, maybe Ernie could address a little bit more, just in terms of what, if you want to just go through just a quick synopsis of the...
Six oh four two is part of Chapter Six, which does talk about the metering and undoing.
It does.
Yes.
And there's provisions within that code too, that on square footage of the size of buildings that would be metered and ones that comply, would need to comply and size buildings that would not. So, but we want to just, really quickly, just for the benefit of those citizens who are here.
I think the basics of it are, anything that refers to the bringing into compliance existing buildings, that's in the appendices of the IGCC, and that's part of the, made part of the code. Obviously, we're only looking at Chapter Six right now to be adopted as part of our code. So anything related to bringing existing buildings up to a higher code would do that. I have a problem doing that anyway, and the ICC in general has in their statements, you know, throughout their codes, that existing things that were done according to the code at the time were never retroited or required to come with the code. This does have things in the appendix that require that, but we wouldn't be looking at that at this time, even with the next time we look at it. They could be expanding our code, that would not be part of what we would be looking at to that. A couple iterations down the road, they're having code hearings right now, in fact, about the 2012 version of the IGCC, where the final document will be approved, and it would form, should be very close to what we have here, but obviously, there could be some changes. And my guess is that this group has had those code hearings, voiced in their opinion, and making their proposals. Is there a specific, six oh C, the specific section of the code they're talking about? And his preference to duplication of the existing code, I think they did that purposely in the first go-round here, so that it reads like the other codes, except it has, you know, in mandatory language form, and so that referring back to those, to the other codes involved. And the 10% improvement over the 2012 IACC, even if it's different, it gives its own methods of how you can attain that, its own methods to meet, like the zero energy performance index, you know, it has that in here, which is, you know, a way to meet that. And I think just the end result, they expect to be 10% better, but they give their own approach to doing it, so. I still think that adopting Chapter Six, this code is a good approach to go for now, not the entire code.
I was just reading back through the, since it's been several weeks since we did it, I was reading back through the minutes of October 4th, where we really did go through a lot of these particular issues, and that, I think, would probably shed a lot of light on the conversations we had in terms of how we discussed this with staff and what the kind of pros and cons were. So we can review those again if that's of interest to anyone, those particular items, just for everyone's benefit, or... What do you think?
Or this has been the subject of two meetings so far, so...
I understand, I understand. Any thoughts? For me, after the previous meetings, I think I've got a good understanding for it, so I don't have any additional questions on it.
I think I'm pretty much in the same place I was when we left off. I have some concerns about whether or no it's at the right timing, that's always been my concern from the beginning. I live with that, I think we've had all the information put in front of us. It's uncomfortable.
I think our questions were answered, I think we already answered them, you know, the last two meetings, so I don't have any issues.
What discussion was there around the ongoing metering, measuring, potential revocation about the IACC, any of that, if any? I didn't see anything about that, but, I mean, there is...
We did, we did...
There is an intense section here that talks about the...
Yeah, we did, we did talk about it briefly, but...
I mean, do we know how that would be handled, what impact that has on town staff, how we feel it would impact builders potentially building here, you know, again, getting back to, is this the right time to get that aggressive...
Right.
You know, I mean, the things that it outlines, I think, from a green energy standpoint, seemed great, but from a process standpoint...
I went to a conference on the adoption of the code that IGCC was pushing, and, you know, went to various cities and came to Denver, went for that. The post occupancy requirements were brought up there, and it's reporting that they have to do, I mean, they have to have the equipment that'll measure and record their energy usage and stuff, and they report it, but that's, it's for internal use of the building owner, so he can evaluate what he may or may not need to do with the building. The town would get a copy of it, but there would not be any requirement for the town enforcing any part of it or making them.
But isn't the statute that basically allows the town to enforce it at some point if they choose to?
Yeah.
If you've reported, right, then...
Right.
If the city chose to enforce it at some point in the future...
The information's...
The information's there that they choose to enforce it, even though you say right now that they might not, right?
Right.
Well, because I understand what you just said, was that it would be up to the building owner whether to report it to the town or the city.
They're required to report.
They're required.
The results of what energy they're using.
It's just what the municipality chooses to do with that information, right?
Right. My understanding, just adopting Chapter Six doesn't give a direction of what the town or the building official would have to do with that. So they'll get the information, evaluate it, if they thought there were some problems or something going on. The main emphasis behind that is actually to get actual building data, energy usage, based on this code, so they can refer back and say, well, this is, 90% of this is working, but, you know, there's things that aren't. And that would be used in future code hearings to evaluate changes to the code. Right? Like every other billing code, every three years, they're going to come out with a new revisions to the code, and they publish them over again. So 2012 was the first one, this, that'll join up with 2012 building codes that they have, and 2015 will be the next code addition of that. They're trying to get more feedback data, because they have ideas of what they think, but it's, they're not getting the feedback requirements of what they're designing, is it actually taking place in the field?
Any other comments from the commission? If we've pulled this now, can we give an opportunity for anyone else to address the Procedurally or no?
You've got some leeway, if you want to reopen a public comment, but now, it's no longer on the consent agenda.
Right.
And it is an agenda item, so it wouldn't be appropriate...
Oh, I see, okay.
...for a public comment at this point.
I got you, okay. Fair enough.
It's circular, but...
I got you. Okay, all right. Okay, well, anyone else have anything they want to bring up? Discussion? Just a... My, I guess my concern about this from, sort of from the get-go has been, should we adopt the green, this piece of the green building code in lieu of just simply adopting the 20, I think, oh, either the next iteration of the code, which I think is the 2012 code. And I think we asked that question way back when, and I think that's still, I'm not sure if I've been persuaded that that's still not the best for us in terms of the next step to take, as opposed to jumping right to adopting the energy code, so. There's some thunder out there.
I think I'm kind of in the same boat, you know, I look at it as, is this the right time to do, put more restrictions on what we can do, versus looking out in the region and seeing that other towns are not adopting this, or, you know, not adopting the full package, that are looking at it next year. I don't know why we're not in that same boat. If you look down the list, Louisville, Longmont, Lafayette, you know, Boulder, all looking at the 2012 IGCC next year. So I think to stay competitive in the region and to kind of, well, I'm kind of in agreement, I don't know why we would adopt a piece of it right now.
Yeah, I mean, I agree with that.
Okay.
And I guess one other, I mean, I don't know if there's an opportunity to encourage developers to look at this, and, you know, have it available for review, you know, as the direction we're moving, just because this type of building is geared to save them money as well as others, and that is the goal.
Yeah, absolutely, I mean, there's certainly, there's a lot of emphasis in the design and construction community, the sustainable design, whether or not we choose to adopt this particular...
And enforce it to maintain it.
And enforce it to maintain it and all those things, right?
Right. Brought up, if you're meeting with an architect on building a new house, or if you're building a building, green codes are brought up, and how green do you want to be, and, you know, all of that's part of the discussion, I think.
And developers have the opportunity to voluntarily achieve those energy savings without it being mandated by the municipality, by going through lead certifications of the various levels, and achieving points that make sense for their development and for their particular property, so. So, okay. Anything else?
We've made your decisions, so...
We have a pending resolution in the...
It's not pending, but...
Oh, yeah, we have a, right, it's not pending at all, but we, there's a proposed resolution, how's that? That we can choose to pass along to the board related to this. Does somebody want to take a stab at that? This is a recommendation to the board, right?
Correct.
Were we expected to give a negative recommendation, or, I mean, or is this, is there no recommendation, or a recommendation against?
Right, I mean, we can, or we can make no resolution, right?
I think the preferred that it is making either a resolution... I think the preferred that it is making either a resolution recommending approval or a resolution to, if it's not recommending approval.
Not in favor, not in favor.
And the particular proposed resolution deals with two separate issues. We seem to have been discussing the first one regarding the commercial code.
Yep.
But there is also a request for approval recommending modification to the current town residential green building code.
Section two.
Section two.
Page one.
Trying to recall, was this actually a reduction in the improvement of the...
Yeah, it's lowering the standard for residential.
Lowering the standard a little bit, right?
You can take this separately, you know, two separate motions, and if they recommend it, it should be different.
Yeah, I think we were... That came... And that part of the resolution came from feedback from the building... From the residential building community, that these were difficult and potentially expensive thresholds to meet on the residential side. Right. It's all coming back to me now. So...
But they're both in the same motion in accordance with this.
Yeah, we... She just said we could break it out.
You could break it out.
So, I make a motion to pass a resolution, Planning Commission, Town Superior, recommending not to approve the addition of chapter six of the International Green Construction Code to the municipal code, and not to recommend approval on an amendment... Oh, wait, and that's it. We're just addressing the...
But isn't that a negative motion? And I believe that's not.
That's fine, you're not really under the rules of Robert's order, so you're okay to make a motion. And it's not a negative motion, because it is your duty as a planning commission to either recommend or not recommend approval of certain things to the Board of Trustees. And so, you're making a positive motion to not recommend approval to the Board of Trustees.
Okay, have a motion? Second by Commissioner McCool. Any discussion on that? Commissioner Pressesator's motion? Okay? All in? Do you want to read it one more time?
Yeah.
You'll need to say it one more time. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town of Superior not recommending approval of the addition of chapter six of the International Green Construction Code to the municipal code.
Okay, so, all in favor of the motion? Four. All opposed? Two. Okay, four to two? Okay? And you want to make a second?
Second motion? Okay, I make a motion to recommend...
Just start over.
Okay, yeah. Resolution of the Planning Commission of the Town Superior recommending approval of the... Of an amendment to the residential green building code. Section two, the Planning Commission hereby recommends approval of amending the resolution Green Building Code Energy Efficiency Thresholds for Single Family dwellings, 3,001 feet to 5,000 in square footage, from 50% to 45% more energy efficient than the 2006 International Energy Conservation Code.
Okay, have a motion? Second by Commissioner Eaton. Any discussion? Okay. All in favor? unanimous? Okay, thank you. That concludes section item four, or section four of the agenda. We are moving on to section five, New Business 2012 Work Plan. Does staff have an introduction or presentation related to the 2012 work plan?
It's, you know...
Go ahead.
I'm sort of segueing into this role a little bit, but you have in front of you a copy of the 2011 work plan that I understand you put together about a year ago.
Uh-huh.
It was put forward to the town board, and they approved it or reported to them, I believe. And in looking through the list, it looks pretty complete that you've considered or had, you know, acted on everything on this list, or most things on this list where it was feasible or possible. And I've been directed to put together a Planning Commission work plan for 2012 with you to present to the town board in early January, and we thought we would take advantage of this meeting scheduled to try and get that list put together. The one thing I wanted to bring up is that in the proposed 2012 budget, the town board has laid out, or it's not approved yet, but they're looking at putting aside money for a comprehensive plan update. And as part of that update, I put in my cover memo that they want to focus on looking at unzoned land within the town, as well as any land that has not been approved with a planned development. And then adding to that, the traffic, let's put it, townwide median, streetscape, and corridor plan, which would look at things such as traffic calming, narrowing of roads or roundabouts, different plans throughout the town. So, that would be part of that comprehensive plan as well. And as Planning Commission, you would be very much involved in that as well. So, that's what I've got. Fred and I have talked about this a little bit more. He probably has more to say.
Well, I think it's been a while since we've done a comprehensive plan update. There has been a major planning effort that was done at the direction of the board regarding the town center across the street. And the question, I guess the issue, the question I have, I think, the Planning Commission should think about is, if we're gonna do a comprehensive plan update, it would probably be helpful to have an idea of how you want to be involved in that, and to what extent what should we... We should actually be undertaking, other than the two items that are specified here, is to look at the undeveloped or unzoned ground that's either can be annexed or is already annexed, but it's... There's been nothing happening on it, as to how we want to take a look at each one of those parcels. There aren't that many, I guess maybe half dozen at the most. And then to go on from there, to look at the existing comprehensive plan and evaluate whether material in there is still relevant or not, and the goals and objectives or policy statements, whether those need to be, you know, upgraded or left as they are. So, the question is, and I suspect there will also be issues that might come up from folks in original Superior. You know, what direction are we going? We did that quite some time ago. We had a fairly involved effort of looking at pressures that might exist on original Superior, how we wanted to do that. And one of the outcomes of that planning process back in the 90s was, we developed that residential character street zone, tried to give some tempering to rezoning demands that might come forward. We have not had any rezoning in the area, particularly north next to the marketplace, but on the other hand, we've also had inquiries about that. And people come and go, and so far, nothing's been realized. But so those are questions that I think, you know, you ought to ask, or yourselves, as to how you want to be involved in this process, because I think it makes a difference if we're gonna have an RFP or whatever, it makes a difference in how that thing is written, as to what we want to do, how we want to accomplish it. And I think the how is as important as to what the content is gonna be in terms of developing a new comp plan.
I agree. I don't know about protocol, but I would like to see points through the process where we're actually sitting down with the town board also, because what I don't really like to do is beat my head on a wall for a year over this, and then present something that gets totally redirected by the board. So, through the process, I'd like to have work sessions or something with the board where, okay, are we headed in the right direction? Is this what you guys see versus we come to an agreement here that goes on and we're not looking in the same ballpark as the board is?
I would echo that, but also, Fred, specifically to what you were mentioning about the sort of character and feel of neighborhoods, I mean, original town is one, of... And how those have been impacted by the changes in, you know, by things that are being developed or approved today, or we anticipate being developed. And so, you know, the... How that process, you went back in the 90s, say, for instance, in original town, how that now might be affected by things like the Ochsner properties selling and developing, and things happened at the... Where we're at today in the marketplace versus where we anticipated we would be at this point, and what the original, or the town center development could potentially mean for, in relation to that, and so on. So, I think that would be an appropriate part of that. I think taking those individual parcels that you've talked... That are still available and looking at those individually, I think is certainly beneficial. And then also, I think for us too, even to get input from the other committees in town, in terms of uses, you know, potential uses of land. And I think about, for instance, the Eldorado property and how it relates to, you know, Prostack and those types of uses that have been bannered around, and how that might affect how we look at the comp plan. So, you know, those are the things I foresee. We certainly have a much stronger feel for regional trail connectivity and things like that, and that may affect certain parcels as well.
I guess the question that I have is, you know, what role, what kind of a role does the Planning Commission want to play in this? Or is there some suggestion that you might want to make to the board as to how this process is carried out?
Talking about what kind of...
Well, I think that goes to Craig's point about not us not banging our head against the wall for something that, you know, a lot of input and collaboration with the town board, let it... As the Planning Commission, let us do our job.
Yeah.
But do it with some direction along the way from, you know, from the board.
So, what you're suggesting, I mean, in simple terms, is, I guess from my point of view, what I think you're saying is that town board should... Your feeling is that the town board should give the Planning Commission the responsibility of doing this, developing a process as part of the planning process, where there's these strong interconnections with the board, so that there's a clear understanding that, you know, what issues are being discussed, and what kinds of conclusions are coming to in terms of different milestones along the process.
Uh-huh.
I mean, it almost seems like that's... I mean, if we're given the responsibility, which is how it's laid out, that it's a primary responsibility of the Planning Commission, that part of our responsibility is to ensure that all groups in town, probably most importantly, the town board, that we're in touch at whatever...
Points.
Yeah, and frequency we find to be appropriate. The town board, those touchpoints are probably gonna be considerably more frequent than, you know, even various committees. But, you know, between the public and the town board and the various committees, I mean, we need... I mean, we should be responsible for ensuring that we're communicating with them, and therefore, by the end, hopefully reach a good review of the comprehensive plans.
Do you think that's problematic from your...
I don't know. I mean, I think this is a goal that our objective that the board wants to attain over the course of 2012. The issue is, is, I think the important issue is how to carry that out, so that it's clear when we set... The staff sets this thing up, that we've got... Whoever's involved understands, you know, what kind of a process needs to be developed and followed through on, and how that's supposed to work, because that interactive process takes time as well. It's not just, you know, looking at the policies that exist in the plan and saying, you know, this one still holds water, this one doesn't, things like that.
I was just gonna say, I think developing a work plan around the... Within the comprehensive plan of those sort of bite-sized chunks of information and, you know, working through it, similar... Not so differently than maybe how we even went through the land use code and saying, you know, we're gonna take these pieces and then, you know, formulate, whether it's either the varying state... Various stages of reviewing that comp plan, but also, you know, whether it's, as you just described it, or some other way of, you know, dividing it up, so that there's both those touchpoints with the stakeholder... All the stakeholders, or we're looking at it sort of geographically, or however we want to really break it up, right?
And I think that those expect... We need to set expectations for the board, that if we think we need to meet them quarterly or monthly, or once or twice, that those are, you know, hopefully set out well in advance, so that those meetings can get scheduled as, you know, so that they're on the books, and we're, you know, we're in and not trying to get on the agenda to go over something with them. I mean, I think that helps hold us to, you know, ensuring that we...
We work through it.
Yeah, that we work through what we expect to when we have our first meeting with them, and that the process moves smoothly, because, I mean, there's nothing harder than trying to get something on the board agenda, you know, the week before, or even the month before, especially if we need an hour. You know, I mean, it's one thing to get 10 or 15 minutes, but if we need an hour work session with them, then I think we should try to get those defined. And probably even, you know, figuring out the public meetings that we think we're gonna need, meetings with the committees, you know, whether we do that as a full Planning Commission, or whether a couple of us attend meetings, and, you know, however, you know, we think we'll do that, try to get that laid out. We could probably do that in a meeting, I would imagine, if that was our primary agenda item for December, February.
Thoughts?
I think some of the phasing and the meetings, things like that, is something that consultant that we end up with can also help lay out the plan. A lot of these organizations that we're looking at and we consider do this, that's what they do for their, you know, with all of the public involvement, the committees, so I'm not too nervous about there being lack of opportunity of additional meetings for you.
Okay. So, assuming the comp plan would be one item of the work plan for 2012, is that...
Yeah.
Bottom line?
Yes.
After all that?
That's one item. Like in the 11 work plan, I think there's some of the things in there probably can roll over and continue on for 2012, because we will be involved in public improvement projects and maybe... It's about public improvement projects, because the list here, I think, we've knocked off some of these in the, right?
Yeah, and if there's any other sort of major capital improvement projects, we could just swap their...
Swap them out.
Swap names or projects out, right? If some of those are accomplished, and some new ones probably hanging around out there. The review and development land use applications, I don't know if that necessarily has to stay on as a work plan item. I know we added it last year, but sort of our purview anyway, right?
Here, okay, removing that piece?
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
The town center, I think, is obviously still a potential item.
Great.
We've talked about green building standards.
You actually have done.
For now, at least, but, you know, I think if, you know, we revisit that or look at the adoption of the 2012 code, if that's something the town is considering, maybe that's a note for later. Yeah.
You said the 2012 green building code, if that keeps... It comes around again, is that what you're saying?
Possibly, yeah. I don't know.
Okay.
If it's appropriate. If it's not one of those items that, you know, they... It's not until 2013 that we would truly adopt a 2012 code, then maybe you shouldn't go on the 2012 work plan, but...
Keep updated on it.
ConocoPhillips thing is... Can come off, so as I'm concerned, at the moment, it's... It seems to be... it seems to be, if they really truly want to move forward and then they're interested in having any communication with us about it, that's fine, but I'm not, I'm not holding my breath at the moment for that. We tried, I know, at one point, but until they, they get some momentum back as to what they're doing or in some direction, it doesn't sound like there's a lot happening there. Is there anything happen on the McCaslin 36 interchange?
Right now, there's a study being done, it's in partnership with the city of Louisville. They've hired, we've hired along with them a consultant to look at traffic studies and counts and come up with a short list of potential improvement options that the two communities would consider for approving, that we're hoping to have more results in the spring or late winter, and we can certainly have a report for you.
I hope it's not a fourth left turn lane off Marshall Road.
I promise it's not. So I do think it's a good idea to keep that on the list.
And I don't know where we stand really in the Jefferson Parkway issue, but we...
I don't think so.
Right, okay. We didn't, we didn't, I don't think that was addressed by us at all during, was it, during 2011? We don't...
Other than just getting, having some conversation on what they were proposing.
There were, yeah, there was some sort of general discussion and sort of staff announcement time or something, right? But we didn't have any other...
Do you want to keep it on the list or? I think it should stay there.
I'd probably keep it on because it also relates to traffic calming measures that we may start doing in anticipation.
I did write down the streetscape and traffic calming and all that kind of stuff, but I think, as you mentioned, that intent is to roll that up under the purview of the comp plan review, so that's fine.
Okay.
I had one.
Oh, great.
I think the staff has found a few, some inconsistencies or whatever, little things in the land use codes. We might want to do a cleanup somewhere along the line.
I have been hoping we'd readdress the land use code. That sounds great, Fred.
That will indoctrinate me fully.
So we want to put that on there?
Sure.
Land use code cleanup somewhere along the line.
Next year.
Yeah, okay.
I'll see when's my turn, bud. Yeah, no, that would be great.
Would it be okay if I put together a list and send it around to you all electronically? Do you feel everyone's all right with it and then I would forward it on to the town board on your behalf?
Sure.
Okay.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
When do they want that by?
Early Jan, or, you know, January, some, one of the meetings in January, probably.
They would just review those work plans?
Yeah.
Oh, okay. Because we could, we don't, you say we don't necessarily have a meeting scheduled for the 17th?
Um, that would be the 15th.
Fifteenth.
And at this point, it doesn't look like we have anything unless you'd like to put something on the agenda.
I want to jump on the comp plan, wait till they review it.
I don't know, I'll have time to put together for a far future.
Yeah, I don't think, I don't know if we'd be even ready to do anything like that at that early. I don't have anything particular.
Then we can clear the calendar for November 15. I think that's it for the work plan.
Okay. That's it, that concludes item five, new business staff, six staff announcements and miscellaneous.
I don't, I don't have any.
I don't, we had two companies come forward wanting to do some sign amendments and I think when they saw the process, they've decided to kind of withdraw and rethink their signage a little bit. Hopefully, if they decide to come forward again, we'll have something for you before yours up, but I'm not banking on it.
We didn't really, we didn't really change the process in the land use code on the sign approvals, did we?
No. It's just that these were, these were programs that where we got to require amendments to existing final flat site plans.
Oh, yeah.
In, in this particular, in Rock Creek, basically.
Okay.
In other words, they were, they needed to go beyond what has already been approved. That's basically what they were asking for and they're kind of thinking about whether they should do that, I guess, or not.
Okay.
Otherwise, you know, we, you know, we, can the staff approve site permits if they meet the intent of the regulations, whether they're part of the documents for Rock Creek or whether they're, it's part of the town code. So these were beyond those, so that's why they were looking at a process and maybe they decide maybe they don't want to do that, I don't know.
Okay. Anything else?
That's all I have for now.
I have one thing. The two meetings in December are the 6th and the 20th. We might do the 6th, but I'm wondering who would be around for the 20th? If we had anything, will there be anybody here? I guess if you could let me know if you're not going to be around or let Beth know, that would be, so we could plan on it. Right now, we don't have anything scheduled, but if something should come up, we would want to know if you could be here.
We'll be here. From what I can tell. Okay, nothing else, I think we're adjourned. Thanks.
Thank you.